Well, welcome. Tonight, we've met with all the individual candidates. These are the special people, as I call them, who not only say things should be different and have opinions on how they should be different, but are unique in that they get up and try and make a difference. So tonight, we're going to have them all together so you can see them all side by side. Let's start with an introduction.
Sure. Thanks for doing this, Al. This is, I think, a really important thing that we do for the community and the voters every year. So I'm Matthew Zekili. I'm a husband and a father of three daughters. I have my two oldest in Brookside and Woodland, a current school committee member, a town meeting member, and also a coach for Milford-Hope-Dale U.S. Soccer. And professionally, I'm a consulting engineer for a Cisco Systems partner, and I've been in IT for 23 years.
Again, thank you, Al, for having me on the show. My name is Christopher Wilson, seeking reelection to Milford School Committee. So currently live here in Milford with my wife Kathy and our kids Ryan and Kaylee. Both are, or excuse me, Ryan's a Milford grad and Kaylee will soon to be a Milford grad. My profession is a mechanical engineer and want again just to kind of continue on to serve Milford.
I'm the new man here. I'm Greg Alagretza. I'm running for the first time, but did serve with Al on the Police Chiefs Committee. Been a lifelong member of in-town, person in-town. I grew up in Milford. I was previously married. I have two older children and I'm currently married. I have a younger daughter that's going to be going into sixth grade. But I want to get on the school committee for multiple reasons, and we'll talk about that as we move on.
Awesome. Thanks, Al. Thanks for having us. Certainly thanks to Milford TV. There's very few forums and opportunities now in town, so we really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Megan Hoenberger. I am also a current member of the Milford School Committee. I'm currently wrapping up my second term. I am the proud mom to three boys, one at Memorial, one at Woodland, and one at Milford High School. I am a certified public accountant in Massachusetts. I work for a Boston-based renewable energy company, and I'm really excited about the opportunity to potentially serve our community for three more years. So thanks for having us.
Three girls, three boys.
I did forget to mention I am a mechanical engineer like Chris, and I've been working in the bio-pharmaceutical industry for about 24 years as a validation consultant now too, so it slipped my mind. The lights.
We picked numbers, and you got the first, closest number, so you'll go first, and we'll go clockwise. We start with a question that I always ask. Matt, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Okay, so three years ago, I acted upon a desire to get more involved and give back to our community, and I did that by following the footsteps of generations in my family, by getting involved directly with the town of Milford. And I landed on the school committee pretty easily because so many in my family, past and present, have both dedicated their lives to education and also have worked for Milford Public Schools directly. So I'm incredibly proud to say that my energy and commitment and desire to be involved and to be part of this committee and to be there for our students and their families and the taxpayers is as high now as it was three years ago when I started my first term. I feel like I have a lot left to do. In fact, I would say in many ways, it feels like I'm just getting started on a lot of the ideas that I had back three years ago. And I think that shows in terms of the commitment and my desire in my attendance record. I've been to 97% of the meetings across all of the different forums and subcommittees that we've had over the last three years.
You missed one?
I missed three. I missed three. COVID was to blame for one. We'll take that blame, I guess. I do believe that the school committee at this moment is in the middle of some discussions of some very critical pieces that when those decisions are finally made are going to shape Milford Public Schools for years, if not decades to come. And I think that the experience of people being involved in those discussions is highly critical right now, and that's why I'm asking the voters to grant me another opportunity to spend another term being involved and hopefully see those things through.
Chris, why should we vote for you?
Well, I really had some soul searching for like this third term, right? Where it's been typical where school committee members will serve two terms and then, you know, and then usually their kids will finish up and they finish up their terms. I feel like this unfinished business, you know, as Matt said, you know, there's some budget implications that we have going on that I feel like my experience with the two terms will be beneficial as we continue through this budget process. We have a high school that we're looking at, and I want to continue on and kind of use my engineering background to be a part of the high school and how that process will develop. You know, I feel like, you know, looking at policies that we've implemented and continuing to look at policies that I want to implement is a big part of why I feel like I can be a good productive member as a third-term member.
Greg?
Being the new person here, I'm at semi-disadvantage when it comes to some of the budgetary reasons, and I know there's many challenges that we have in Milford, whether that is, like we said, the budget, the reduction in the aid, the influx of new immigrants, as we all are very aware of, that affect the population at the school. Being a native of Milford and having a young child that's going to be going into sixth grade, I'm very concerned with the safety aspect at Stacy and things that are going on there. I'll anecdotally on, I'll tell a story. So my parents grew up in Milford. My grandparents were the son and daughter of Italian immigrants. My grandfather was a Polish immigrant. They grew up in Milford. They've all served in various methods through the community, uncle, grandmother, all besides the point. But my father was a lineman, and he worked for Mass Electric. And he worked there for about 40 years and became a foreman, and my mother stayed home with the kids. I had two other brothers. And she sent us to school every day, never thinking of, you know, we're going to school, what was going to be in the curriculum. We came home, we had dinner, we went to church on Sundays. So to me, it was a set of values that were passed down from my parents. They never thought that, you know, when their kid went off to school, that maybe the school was sort of getting in the way of that. My upbringing, going to school in Milford, was second to none. The teachers in Milford, as Matt is well aware, I have right now three members in my family that are teaching in Milford. My Uncle Nello taught for years and years in-town.
Nello, hello.
My Uncle Lee was the chairman of the school committee. My grandma was on the school committee. My grandfather was a select board member and the town moderator before he unfortunately had cancer and died, and I was only seven years old. My cousin Amy serves down at the church all the time. She's been there for years and years. She's one of the most kind and generous people that I have the pleasure to know. She was in my class as well and brilliant. So I feel that, all that being said, the last few years, I've looked and seen what has been going on throughout the state and the country, and it probably started with COVID because there's a lot of questions I had regarding the COVID and how the kids were dealt with, with the masking and how long it went on. And I kept having questions because I was looking at other states and other towns and other countries dealing with it a different way, and we bring up the question, well, why aren't we looking at like different data and saying, okay, is this really harming our kids, you know, keeping them masked separate? It's causing, you know, all sorts of mental issues, you know, they're losing a year of schooling. All of that was very concerning. And then there was more sort of cultural things that were coming along that I had questions about, you know, as certain values that I had that I didn't think that the schools should sort of be infringing on those type of things. So as my child started getting older and going up, I was like, well, I kept leaning in saying, should I run? Should I not run? And then finally this year, I was like, you know what? I'm concerned enough with the issues of Stacy and like Chris said about the new high school, having the engineering background. My grandfather was actually involved in the building of the first high school with Memorial and BBT, which I just found out. I didn't even realize that until the other day I was talking to my cousin. So I think all of that encompasses around, and I want to be the voice. So I had those questions saying, okay, why didn't we look at alternative ways to finish this? Why do I want, you know, someone asking my seven or eight-year-old or nine-year-old, you know, what do you identify with or what are your pronouns? Or does that help them become a better person later in life? So for me, the whole idea of the public school system is to create better, educating people to be productive members of society, right? So for the school, I think they should focus on how to think and not what to think. And I think there was sort of started getting into that area where they're not really infringing, but they're sort of acting like parents. And I think it's unfair that the teachers as well, because now we're asking teachers to do so much, whether discipline-wise, they can't do as much, they have to act as counselors in the classroom.
And we're going to get into those areas.
Yeah.
And for anybody who wasn't part of the '70s in Milford, the Nello hello was not mocking your family.
No.
There was a famous, your Uncle Nello.
Yes.
When we first got this new technology in the high school, we had rotary phones in every classroom. It was so exciting, and Mr. Alagretza would answer the phone all the time saying, hello, Nello.
He would, it's true.
And all of us picked up on that forever.
So it was very idyllic. So lastly, I just wanted to say that I want to be the voice for those parents that might have had questions like I did.
Good. Meg?
Sure. Thanks, Al. So as I mentioned in my introduction, I am the proud parent to three boys who attend and will attend come fall to Milford Public Schools. So I am certainly heavily invested in the success of the Milford Public Schools. That said, I don't think that's why you should vote for me. I think, I hope you will vote for me because I'm hardworking, accountable, and transparent. And I also think I'm an effective collaborator, which I think is critical on a team of seven.
Now, when we had our individual shows, I asked you for the three top issues that you think you'll face. With four people here, I've got to cut it to one to start. So Chris, if you were to pick one issue that you think will be the most important issue coming up, and I know there's many that could be, but if you had to pick one, what would it be?
It would definitely be the budget. Obviously, we've seen the Chapter 70 funds be affected by the lowering of our state revenue. So Milford alone, we've lost millions of dollars of what that Chapter 70, which is the state funding that comes to our community to help offset our diversity. With that, certainly our, you know, our local impact, which has been pretty minimal, is not going to be as minimal as what it has been in the past few years. So therefore, our, what we'd call, I know, our level service budget, so that's going into our budget with not hiring anybody, just increasing for our payroll increases, increasing for the cost to keep the lights on, you know, that's still a millions of dollars' worth of additional funds that we're going to need every year to operate. So, you know, the school committee, the two members that are here, we've agreed to at least not put forth any new initiatives at this point in time, just so we can control our costs and really look at our budget. So again, budget is the number one issue going on right now.
And here I am thinking you're going to say you had too much money and not enough to spend it on.
Yes. Love to say that.
Now, initiatives, to the common person of Milford, that means additions, correct?
Addition, so am I adding a first-grade teacher, a fourth-grade teacher, a music teacher? Am I buying new Chromebooks? Am I implementing new math programs that require some professional development or some new programs that they need? So a lot of, anything new that you're going to add to our school system?
It doesn't mean cutting from the existing programs.
Not at all. Initiatives, new, nothing that we, currently right now, we are not cutting anything and have no intentions of cutting anything and certainly no intentions of laying off any employees.
Greg, if you had to pick one issue, what would you deal with?
So not being as well up on the budget and understanding the numbers from the Chapter 70, I would say the biggest challenge facing us is the influx of the English learners. I've heard from a lot of parents regarding the challenges that not only the children face, that they feel like their kids are falling behind in classrooms, but the teachers as well, because some of the classes have three and four interpreters and trying to interpret three or four languages and get through. So I think sometimes having empathy for the immigrants that have come to town because they want the same things that our families did when they came to town, right? They want a better life for themselves. But I think we have to sort of think outside the box and figure out a way to, one of the parents had told me, like in their child's class, there's only like five English speakers out of the whole class. And to me, that doesn't seem like it should be happening in the town. Doesn't seem like if we put it under that lens of, you know, we ask the question, is every piece of policy or line, I'd like to put it under the lens of, does this improve the quality of the education in town? So that to me seems like a big challenge and something we should address to help improve the quality of education in town going forward.
Meg, you're number one.
I'm going to go with facilities, Al. We have a high school that is in dire need of attention, and certainly I agree with the budgetary challenges. I am hopeful that that's more of a one-year issue. We've added dozens of staff over the past few years, and so I actually think we're in a very good position staff-wise. So I'm looking at the facilities and the zeros behind the dollar signs that that building is going to entail and say that that's definitely my number one.
Matt?
So I'm going to go with a different one, but it kind of touches on everybody's. My highest priority, one of my big focuses right now is literacy. And as Chris said, our budget, we decided to pull back new initiatives currently, and that really puts me in a hard spot to care about literacy. Some people have seen the meeting and seen, heard the stats, you know, in K through 2, we're sending 50% of our students from K through 2 forward behind at least one grade level in reading. And this is not a Milford thing, I think I shared this with you a little bit last time. This is a state, it's a national thing. There's been a couple of Boston Globe articles. They called out the 25 most wealthy towns in Massachusetts who are struggling with this problem. More recently, Boston Public Schools put out a whole piece in Boston Globe about how they're essentially evolving, what they're considering the structure of literacy. And somehow, as the science of education has evolved, literacy has not, and it's stayed behind. And I think the pandemic has brought that out even faster, where kids lost a bit more on the reading. And one of the things that we really need to look at is moving forward a structured curriculum in the sense that it would give our teachers and our staff from K to 8 a guideline to try to provide the same type of learning and the same type of tools all the way through to bring these kids up and help their reading evolve. And the struggle we have right now is, it's an incredibly expensive thing to do, and when you bring a new program in, you're committing to it for five years, which obviously brings some pressure in that you don't want to bring the wrong program in, because if you do that, you're now five years down the road and all of those kids have lost all that time. So we're at a tough spot right now. I know everybody's eager to try to make more progress in that category of learning, just like we have in math over the last two to three years with that new program. But we have a lot of tough decisions ahead of us and even just in the coming weeks and some of our budget meetings to try to figure out what we can do with the funds that the state has handed to us.
Greg, school choice, as everybody knows, is a program where you, as a parent, can select, as long as another town will accept children, can select to send your children out of Milford. We can also select to allow children to come into Milford. And the state counts them all up, and for every child that goes out, we get $15,000 or so less in school Chapter 70 money or school choice money, not Chapter 70. For every child that comes in, we get the equivalent. We're losing $1.3 million in school choice because of policies made by school committee, because we've said we're not taking any kids in. Is that the right choice?
I think we're sort of stuck in a pickle. I think with the influx of, through no result, through no fault of the town of Milford, the decisions made at the federal level and the state level have created a situation where we're getting a massive amount of new students, non-English-speaking students, the immigrants that we just talked about. I actually looked into, one of the reasons why I'm running is because I looked into school choosing my child out of Milford school system for some of these reasons that we had just spoken about. And one of the reasons I was running, because I would love to see, you know, the pride that I had in school growing up, the town return that for everybody and not people thinking about school choosing their child out to bring it in. I think now, I'm sure the school committee members would agree with me, their hands are sort of tied where there's really no room to bring anybody in. So I think it's more of an issue of space than an issue of desire to bring anybody in. I'm not sure how many are looking to come in. I think we're at a point now where more people are looking to go out, which doesn't speak well of where the town school system is at present. Not disparaging any of the teachers or things like that, it's just a situation of what we're looking at, whether it's safety or, you know, immigrants, so.
Meg, did we make the right decision to not allow the Gazintas and only the Gazaudis?
Well, I'm biased because obviously I was part of that decision-making process, Al, but I would say absolutely. I think it would be a disservice to all of the students in our community if those class sizes, and our staff, quite frankly, if our class sizes were any bigger. So I appreciate that it has a cost. I think that's unfortunate. I wish it didn't, but I absolutely support that decision.
Matt, good idea or not?
Yeah, look, when I started, we didn't have it shut down at all, and we did have it coming in, and the gap was obviously shorter financially. But we have to remember that state legislation mandates that every municipality is responsible for educating the residents of their town first. So as they've all said, if we don't have anywhere to put kids, if we're struggling and we have to put in addition on Brookside for $4 million to add six classrooms so that the kids who live here can fit, we can't risk having no space. And in Milford Public Schools, if you look at the enrollment, not necessarily in the last year or so, but it fluctuates drastically, and we could change by 100 kids or more over the course of a school year.
Some years, 200.
In a school year, and that's two-thirds of a grade, and naturally it's spread across K through 12, but we can't maximize our space day one for towns to send their kids in to then have no room whatsoever and increase our class sizes and strain everything across the board. So unfortunately, yes, I think we have the right decision in place to not let them in.
Chris, did you guys make the right decision?
We did make the right decision. We made the right decision for the benefit of the students, the Milford students. You know, as everybody has said, there's just so many seats in a classroom, and the teachers can only teach to so many kids in an effective way, right? So if our class sizes continue to go up, you know, it's just not going to be as effective for the teachers and the teaching element of it. So certainly, yeah, we have no choice but to close down that school choice in. I think that there's also that school choice out component, too, that we also have to be aware of, you know, that why are Milford students choicing out to other schools, whether that's Hope Dale or to the Charter School in Franklin? Because both of those do come at a very high cost to the Milford taxpayers. So we need to ensure, you know, that the quality of the education that we give in Milford is such that students don't want to leave our school system. You know, we've tried to go send surveys out to families that are choicing out, and it's just, it's tough, right? I feel like they're going to be very guarded with their answers. So, you know, I think we'll, the school committee will continue to strive to improve education, to pull that back and to help the taxpayer. But again, for now, we have to at least hold off on bringing students in because of the number of seats available and try to do our best at retaining as many Milford students as possible.
We made a decision a few years back. We had school resource officers. You know, you think of Anthony and the people that the officers in the school. We added a SWAT team, which was adding $600,000 a year to our expenses. Good decision or not?
Truthfully, Al, I think it's terrifying that in 2024, these are the things that we're talking about. I think we've all read enough headlines and enough articles. It's tragic that these are the things that we're talking about in sending our kids to school. So I think it's awful. Do I support it? Of course, I send my children in those buildings, whatever it is that we think that we can be done, you know, to keep them safe. I don't think that that cost should be unlimited, but I support the effort that was made. It was primarily made, my understanding is, in regards to response time and how quickly they could get to our buildings. I think the things that we can do to help reassure families, community members, and parents is the right thing. The school resource officers, just, you know, I loved when you shared a story, Greg, to start. Just, I was in Memorial one year, it happened to be Valentine's Day, and the school resource officers were walking down the halls, and kids were literally running out to give them Valentines. And I thought like, what a great connection that these little kids have with those, you know, law enforcement officials. And so I think the collaboration and the community piece, I view it as a strength. So yes, I support it.
Well, when you think about everything we read in the papers, the hysteria about anti-police, the craziness that, you know, are they going to be perfect cops? No, there's going to be one out of 100. They're human. But the trust, and I think that's one of the things that I admire the most is, when you see Anthony and with the kids, it's like family. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, it's a disgusting byproduct of the world that we live in now. And I do want to be clear that the school committee did not pay $600,000 for a SWAT team. This was training for, this was training for the police and the response times, as Megan put it. And it's unfortunately, having the response and the training is just necessary in today's world. So, yes, I think that is a beneficial, a beneficial investment to the community, and I think that that's one step. I think that we need to keep working forward, and unfortunately, some of our new initiatives were more focused in terms of the guidance department and the mental health department because, as Greg noted earlier, you know, the pandemic kind of exasperated so many struggles that our kids see in a way created some more. And it's one thing to make sure we have the response time and the ability to keep them safe if one of those terrible things happens, but we have to keep moving this stuff forward and investing further in helping our students learn and grow as humans, you know, on their own and in their educational process beyond just the, you know, the police and safety matter and that aspect too. But yes, we, unfortunately, it was a good investment, and we don't have much of a choice.
I remember when it was brought to us. I was vice chairman at the time. I looked at Chris Moore, who was chairman, and I said, God help us. If something happens, we turn this down. Because the numbers that Meg brought up, everybody was pretty proud that they can get a police SWAT unit to Milford within, I think it was 38 minutes or 40 minutes from being called. Of course, the next logical question is, how long does one of these sick incidents take? They said the average incident's over in 20 minutes, 18 minutes. I said, so we're going to have all these highly-trained people showing up when it's too late to do anything?
Yeah.
So, Chris, what do you think?
I certainly agree with the need for it in our community. You know, certainly, it's a, it basically is an insurance policy that we have for our staff and our students. God forbid, we never need to cash in on that insurance policy, but we know that it's there in place. I think that it's great to be able to share that with community members that may have concerns, that we do have this response. We have our resource officers amongst the buildings, and they're floating amongst our five buildings. But they also have the ability to call in additional resources if need be, and those resources train in all five of our buildings, so they're very familiar with our buildings. So again, God forbid that something happens, they know the buildings, they're trained how to navigate those buildings, and, you know, they are there to help protect, again, our students and our staff.
Greg?
As, I'm basically going to agree with all of them. It's a sad state of affairs that it's needed. I think a lot of it has to do with, as you said, the anti-police rhetoric really is disheartening and disappointing, and the fact that it keeps getting pushed is disturbing and it sort of angers me. Serving with you on the Police Chiefs Committee, you know, one of the reasons I served on that and now I'm going for the school committee is because of, I believe that the police are an integral part of the, you know, the town, you know? They do community service, and keeping the schools safe, keeping our future generations safe is of the utmost importance. So to me, I would like to see, you know, I'm not sure if we have resource officers in every if we have resource officers in every single school building. It would be good because just that presence alone is shown to be a deterrent for anybody thinking about that. Is it going to happen in our town? You don't know. But like Chris said, it's a great insurance policy to have and it's probably something that's going to attract people to the town, you know, saying, you know what, my kid's going to be safe in the Milford schools.
Well, I got to tell you, I went into participating in a mentor program the other day. Two cop cars, Anthony and another officer are parked right in front. That had an effect. You know, I'm looking saying, okay, this community is supporting the school. And the fact that I know how well he gets along with the kids, because I think you're right, when you build that trust from the beginning as children, it just carries through.
Absolutely. I completely agree with you. It's.
We've got a little bit of an investment coming up.
We do.
Milford High School.
Yes.
What are your thoughts and comments on Milford High?
Well, I'm excited. I'm excited that after a couple of years, we're able to get the right statement of interest through to the MSBA. Now, I think the MSBA program is something that this town absolutely needs to move forward with a high school project. Some of the numbers thrown out lately have been anywhere from 300 to 500 million dollars for some of these schools. Now, that means nothing to us right now. We're just getting started in the stages of our eligibility period, which is the first step is an eight. It's a step that includes eight phases, eight pieces of information have to be gathered between August 1st and March of 2025. So we're kind of in a early preparation phase right now and that's where a lot of our focus is. And this is a spot where we start basically getting all of our ducks in a row to identify, you know, the core things like an educational profile, chapter 74, if we want to offer any any vocational type classes and shops and stuff like that to our students. It's a way for us to prepare for the bigger discussion that a lot of people want to get to already ahead of time, which is the feasibility study, which is going to tell us what we can do with our building, if there's other options, other locations and stuff like that. But it's exciting to be there, certainly. And I think that we as a committee, whether it's the one that's there now or if Greg joins us, you know, in April, potentially however this works out, the committee needs to keep completely focused because we cannot slip out of this first phase. The rule is if you don't get it done and the window open, you're out. Good luck, apply again next year. And that does not mean we're back next year.
I was going to say, but it could take you eight years to.
If there's 10, 15 more districts that are more of a priority than you are next year, then yes, you're not guaranteed. So it's a critical focus and obviously there is a big dollar value coming with it down the road, but for now, we have a little time, but not much.
New or refurbished?
I'd love new. Who wouldn't like new? But we do obviously owe it to the taxpayers, right, to do what's fiscally responsible. And we're not going to know that answer until we have that feasibility study done. So, you know, my gut feeling says if the core of the high school is in good shape, we can we can refurb and use those bones to put something incredible in place for the town, but we have to wait to find out from people that are far smarter than I am when it comes to facilities and buildings to tell us what we can and can't do.
Chris, new Milford High School?
Of course, new. Who wouldn't want a brand new house? I mean, certainly, Milford High School, it's 50 years old, right? So who wouldn't want to move out of their 50-year-old house and move into a brand new house? Now, that comes at a cost, as Matt has said. So we can't bankrupt Milford. We, you know, we have to look at it from the taxpayer side of it. So it's going to be very important to go through this feasibility study process, fully understand what is the state of our current building, what are the options for a new building, whether that new building is painting the walls and fixing up the windows, building up some new wings or completely starting new. So again, we've, we are at the ground floor, as Matt had said, and it's an eight-phase process to get through. Certainly, again, would love new. I think that education has evolved. Technology has evolved greatly in 50 years. So when you think about being able to implement technology alone within a brand new building, it would benefit our students.
Greg, Milford High School?
Proud Milford High grad, wasn't there when it was built, but just like these gentlemen have said, I want to commend the committee for getting it to this point. And it's very important for the town. It's obviously, like you said, it's a huge expense. I would say I'd like a new high school. But going with the technology, I understand it's on a five-acre lot right now, like the footprint is five acres. So we have five acres to do it. Would it be, if you had another spot, would it be sort of an odd shape? You know, so can we build up off of the existing structure? Would you build up higher with technology? Could you pull out some of the guts if you do one wing at a time? It would take, what, five, anywhere between five and like eight years maybe to get it completed, but at least you can move in at one at a time and you can instill some of those technological aspects to the building, to the existing one. But like these gentlemen just said, I think whatever is the most fiscally responsible of the town is going to be the way to go because we already have a lot of impact, other things that affect the taxpayers. And that's one of the things you hear all the time, you know, taxes going up constantly. And it's like, okay, we want to take care of the town as well as the students. So if it's feasible, then we'd love a brand new high school.
And it's almost 50 years when Paul Revere and I first walked in.
Yeah.
Class of '74 is celebrating its 50th anniversary this year. So it's been 50 years since we moved into that school. Meg, Milford High School?
Sure. So on the school committee, Al, you have a lot of opportunity to make decisions and make choices. This is not a choice. That building needs to be addressed. We don't have the financial resources to continue to fix all the things that are breaking and will continue to break. So I, in advance, would like to thank our town meeting for supporting us as we move this project forward. You know, you've been a member of the finance committee for decades. You've been saying for years, a school is coming, a school has to come. And so I don't see it as a choice. I see it as a must-do. In terms of new or refurbished, that's not my decision. I don't think that the feasibility study will tell us that. I think what excites me is the potential. When I think about, my personal opinion is a lot of our challenges are perception. And when I think about the energy and the spirit and community that the new Woodland Building created, I cannot wait for that to happen at Milford High School. And I think about the new programming, potentially bringing up the eighth grade. I think it's going to be phenomenal for our district and for our town, quite frankly. And so I'm really excited about the process.
Mind if I just piggyback on that? I just want to tell a story that came up in a meeting recently. Putting into our buildings and into our schools what we expect our kids to bring out of it. Recently, we replaced the tables at Milford High School and there was a lot of reports of the tables were a mess. It looked like beavers were having lunch on the tables and there was a disaster. Everything was sticky and trash was everywhere. And we heard from our student rep recently that that the students not only love the tables, but suddenly the trash and the mess is gone. And what I think that told the committee was that we put some pride in the building and we led by example by giving them something new and showing them that we respect them, we respect the space and want to give them the best. And they've returned the favor in doing the same thing. So as Meg said, you know, I wasn't as involved when Woodland came around to see that excitement, but we can see it in little pieces in the high school. Every time we do just a little bit more to make things a little better for them, excuse me. So I think, I think doing this for the high school is going to, it's just going to have a wonderful effect on the entire community and the students going forward because it's going to give them that pride that they go to school here.
You know, it's funny you bring that up because one of the most heavily watched shows, instead of our normal six people, we probably had eight or nine, was the tour of Woodland. Because when Woodland was being, the new Woodland was being built, we took a camera, walked through it. And then when it was done, we took the same camera, walked through it again. And it was amazing, the reaction you got from people, the pride they felt. So let's hope that Milford High is the same way. Greg, did you?
Yeah, I wanted to continue off of what Matt was saying because I had heard recently about some disturbing things about, you know, we have some older facilities in town and we, focusing just on the high school isn't the right thing to do. I think facility-wise, we need to focus on Memorial and figuring out, I know that some disturbing problems I heard that were down there with the things that were going on. And then going back to the high school, I know the auditorium, there's a lot of activities that go on. We have concerts there and dance recitals and the chairs are just a disaster. And I know we're talking, we're back in the budget, right? So we have a limited amount of money. But going with all of those things, just like you said, if you take pride in your other schools, the kids are happy to be there. They take better care of the facility and the parents are, you know, more than happy to maybe pay a little more to send their kids there because now they say, oh, this place looks great.
Chris, fundamental question. Many of us were born in Milford and just stayed. Some of us made a conscious decision to move their family to Milford. But whichever way you shake it, the fundamental question of any parent is, will my child get a good education in Milford? That's question one. Second question, if you believe so, why are our test scores lower than all the communities around us?
So to answer the question, can you get a good education in Milford 100%? I would have to say yes. So my son, that graduated in 2022, got accepted at college, went away to college. My daughter that will be graduating this coming spring has been accepted at college and will be going away at college. Her friends, too, my son's friends. So I feel like you talk to those families and they've been very happy with the education process throughout Milford, you know, starting when my kids started at Shining Star Preschool and went through all 12, all actually 13 grades, you know, from that standpoint. You know, is it perfect? No. Is there, do we have a large diverse population? Yes. No different than diverse population that I work with, too. So I feel like having a diverse population is actually, it's a good thing. Now, it does come with some of that negative side of of like English language learners that are going to struggle on some of the standardized tests. So why are our test scores low? Well, because of that diversity. You know, if you bring a student in from another country that just has not mastered the English language and is still coming up to speed with, you know, education in Massachusetts, which is very, very good compared to the other 50 states, our test scores are going to be low. And I'm not saying it's an excuse, but it's certainly a way of driving towards improving. So I think that we look at that as let's keep showing steady incremental improvements for those test scores.
Greg?
I agree with Chris in certain ways and I also like.
Question number one.
Yeah.
If I ask you, will my child get a good education in Milford?
I think it's possible for any child to get a good education in Milford, but I also think that they need to be in attendance. I know there's been some attendance issues that have come up. Whether that's a cultural thing where a lot of the people that have come to town don't understand that, okay, that maybe their kids need to be in schools as much as they do because they don't, you know, from where they came from, it's not as big as an impetus for them to do that. Obviously, kids graduate and go to college every year. I think as well as now, with the exorbitant cost of college, I think it might be wise to focus some of our, if we get extra money or, you know, we be able to do some more initiatives, maybe start some additional vocational type of classes to expose some of these kids. It doesn't have to be, you know, we're not going to copy BBT. We'd have to get permission from the superintendent for that. But if we expose them to additional ones, even like broadcasting or journalism or, you know, electrical, we used to have shops. I don't know how many shops are up to high school now. You know, those are things that kids can say, hey, you know what, there's something, college isn't for every kid. Not every kid has to be to go to college to be successful. And I think a lot of companies are probably moving away from that. So yes, a kid can get a good education in Milford still. The teachers are fantastic. They have difficulties because of overcrowding and stuff. Going to the MCAS scores. I'm not a huge believer. I'd prefer that we ask the teachers how they feel that their students in their classes are doing, like locally, and not as a comparison to the other parts of the state. We have different demographics. A lot of kids don't do well with standardized testing. So I think the teachers are our best resource when it comes to, hey, how is your class doing? And I would like to see more emphasis on that. So can the scores come up? Sure. But I don't like, when the MCASs came in, it seemed like teachers were teaching to the MCAS rather than teaching their curriculum. And I think we need to get back to teaching the curriculum to, like I said, make these, back to the question, does it make them a better student and does it improve the quality of education in town?
Meg?
Can your student get a good education? 100%. Yes, absolutely. Can we do better? Yes, absolutely. I think when we talk about surrounding towns, Al, that's where we get, in my opinion, that's where we get into trouble because we need to look at comparable districts versus surrounding towns because you can't take different populations and compare them. You can't take apples and compare them to oranges, right? That's just, that's not a helpful comparison. I think we've made a lot of investments in the district over the past few years in terms of data and data availability. So with the iReady K to 8 and really being able to access that data on a more frequent basis. Because MCAS is a couple of days, once a year, you get the test scores. That's not particularly helpful for teachers as they want to navigate throughout the course of the year. And so I think we've done a great job at trying to provide additional tools to support and then hopefully we will see the results. Certainly with our new math curriculum, our expectation is over the next few new years, we're going to see those increases really pay off. We're seeing good results in our student growth percentage, right? So we're seeing growth. That's what we want to see. We want to see them do better. I do think there's pandemic recovery that's occurring, so we want to continue to see those improvements. I couldn't agree more, you know, with Chris and with Greg in terms of the absenteeism. We actually recently had a presentation, if you want to go back and watch it, regarding the correlation between MCAS scores and chronic absenteeism. Like, if you're not in school, you will not do well in those tests. Mr. Ottland does an amazing job with data. He tells all parents of incoming students the correlation between absenteeism and your GPA and your high school success. You have to be at school in order to learn. And so we're also making investments to try to improve that, but it's an issue for sure.
Yes, yes, you can. I mean, education is what you put into it and as they said, you know, being there is a number of priority and there are an infinite number of reasons why students are having a hard time getting to school. There's a lot of things that can be roadblocks for them, but yes, you can get a good education here. And to carry on with what Meg said, you know, we don't compare Westfield State University to the Patriots because they're close. They're not the same, they're on the same playing field. And I think we get stuck in this argument about surrounding towns because those are the ones that people can drive to and potentially school choice their kids to. But our true comparables are Malden and Somerville and West Springfield and Marlboro. We're those communities. And what's comparable is the special populations you have, the student body size and all that stuff. And not to defend MCAS because I, quite honestly, I hate MCAS and I wish they would go away. And I'm hopeful that in the coming years, the requirement will be going away. But when you look at the districts that we compare to, as Meg said, we're actually doing, we're doing well. Can we do better? Everyone can do better. There's probably not a district in the state that couldn't improve. But if you look at our comparable districts, we're second in both English and language arts and math in 10th grade. And that student growth percentile, as Megan was talking about, is the measurement of how a student has progressed year over year. And we're second in those categories, too. And if you really want to look at surrounding towns, and like I told you this last time, if you're looking at that student growth percentage number, we're ahead of Holliston, Bellingham and Franklin. And there's another one in there I'm missing in ELA. We're ahead of them. As in our kids are met where they are and taken further than those surrounding towns. So, yeah, we have a ways to go. We have a lot of hurdles, as Chris said, you know, the language being one of them. You're handing kids a test in English and some of them have barely had a year or two exposure to the language. So there's a lot to do, but I do agree with Greg, too. We do a good job of taking all of our different metrics and putting them together. Even when you talk to your teachers and your principals in the building, they'll tell you, you know, here's the iReady, take a look at it and then toss it. Because that's one piece of so many things that make up what your student is. And as soon as the state catches up to that being reality and removes that requirement for graduation, I think that everyone across the board is going to be in a better position.
Going to give you two minutes to talk about special needs. Do we invest enough or what could we do to be better? And special needs, in my definition, old Portuguese definition, is not just the kids who need help to get to the mean, but also the kids at the top and the kids who aren't traditional. You know, we talk about BBT and how well they've done. But as I mentioned in the earlier shows, I worry about people like my father who put in an organic chemistry class, wouldn't do that well, but give the man a tool. And you should know for biotech, I mean, operators start at 50-plus thousand dollars a year. You can make a really good living.
Yeah, and in my line of work as a contractor, they can make even more because you're paid by the hour. It's great. That's what happened to me. I went from one industry into a contract and it was like a 30% raise. I was like, sign me up. I didn't even know what I was getting into and I've been there ever since. But it's funny you mention special needs because I have a very close friend whose daughter has a couple of special needs kids and she's looking outside of the, outside of Milford because we don't offer enough. And it seems like the focus has been so highly because of the influx of all the English learners and needing of interpreters in the classrooms and things like that, that a lot of people feel that their kids are being left behind and the focus is going on this new population over the traditional students and some of the special needs kids. And I feel, I feel bad about that. I don't know, you know, all the budgetary things, like I said, I don't have them at hand. I haven't been involved with the school committee, which I hope to be elected to help with that. But I know that that could definitely. But I know that that could definitely be more of a focus, to focus on the special needs kids, like you said, whether it's the top or at the bottom, or trying to get those people that might not be going to college additional opportunities to do something else, like you said, swing a hammer.
Meg?
So I appreciate the question, Al. I think first and foremost, as a parent, I always want us to be investing more in our children, in all of our children. But I'm also a taxpayer, and so the reality is, you know, there's a pie and we have to divide it, and we have to be sensitive to that. As a member of the school committee who's had, you know, the budget brought to them, you know, all these Saturdays for all these years now, I I'm not aware of specifically a special education request that's come our way that we've said no to. I think as a general matter, those are typically always things that we look to move forward as a new initiative. I do think as those those have a big significant cost on our budget in terms of as we're placing students out of districts for their tuition and for their transport. So I think we should continue to look at cost benefit and other additional services we could bring in that would actually end up being a cost savings to our community. We've made certain investments, I can share, you know, personally, we've invested in CADA STEM at the CADA two level, which I I have a second grader who like, that's the highlight of his week. So I I think we've done certain things, should we do more? Of course. And so we have to look at the cost benefit and where and when is the right time to implement it.
Thirty seconds of, do we do enough for our top Nobel laureate potential people?
Yeah, I mean, again, antinomally, Al, you know, we have very close friends, in the past two years, they've graduated students that are now at Cornell and Duke. And so I think we are graduating children who end up being very successful, should, you know, the college path be what they choose.
Matt?
Yeah, so my first couple of years, I noticed we always ran into compliance problems, right? Where where we start, we start the year off with an expected amount of students, an expected amount of special needs and ELS, and all of the challenges laid out, and we have the staff in place. And then by the time we get to the next budget season, we've had so many kids come in that we've fallen behind compliance, and we spend more time investing money to catch back up again, to play this cycle of always falling behind. And it's been nice that that's leveled off, but a lot of the times, we do feel like we're investing in just getting our head back above water. And we're we're not always moving further forward as quickly as I think a lot of us would like, especially on the community and in the town. So I do think we do a good job. I know that when we did have school choice in open, a lot of the, a lot of the families that were sending their kids into Milford were coming here for our special needs departments. And a lot of the reasons is because there's lots, and many surrounding towns just don't have the resources to offer anything. So so it's been very beneficial for those families outside of town, but obviously, we can always do more, certainly. And and I've seen the the benefits of STEM K down at the K and two level two is the the best part about something like that is in a way, it's non-traditional, right? They don't, they don't know they're learning. My daughter comes home and she goes, yeah, I played with boxes and tape and we made this thing. And and I was like, oh, it's cool, so you learned a lot? No, I wasn't learning. That's why it's working. And on the on the high school, and you know, Greg touched on something that's been a real focus of mine too. And and when we grew up, going to college was the priority. And if you look at the stats today, I shared them last time, sixty two percent of people who started undergraduate program finish it in six years. And only sixty six percent since twenty sixteen ever finished their four-year degree. So the goal is not to college, the goal is, A, is college right for you? B, is it affordable? Let's find one that is affordable. And and what are you truly interested in? And that's why I think, you know, especially as we get into the the MSBA program and the high school, investing in chapter seventy four research and what vocational options that we can bring in that will give kids an insight into some of the most up-to-date jobs that everybody are looking for, like biotech and stuff like that, is going to help dictate a lot of this and guide. And and that's really going to be a big add in terms of enrichment, especially at our high school, to give these students an opportunity to find excitement for success in that three to five years after high school, regardless of what it might be.
Chris, got a minute?
All right, I'll be quick, yeah, so certainly, there's two phases to that. You have special needs, which are kids that just need that little extra support. And I I always look back at my son, right, who needed that extra support, but then became a successful graduate that went on to college. And he also could have been a successful graduate that went out into the workforce too. So, you know, we've certainly have a variety of students that are going to go on different pathways. But to support them on any pathway through the special education, special education process is important. When you talk about enrichment, which is taking our general education kids and giving them programs to just give them a little bit more education, some little more programs. You know, a few years ago, the town invested in our science labs in a tune of five hundred thousand dollars. And certainly, I feel like that has been a huge upgrade to the high school as far as, you know, the science programs. So I think we need to continue to look towards other aspects and other programs that are going to enrich our students.
Chris, I'm from Milford, you got one minute, why should I vote for you?
So again, thank you very much for having me on the show tonight, really appreciate it. Again, just looking to serve a third term for the Milford School Committee, I've served two terms as chairman. And it's really given me a look at, you know, the policies that we still need to continue to develop for the betterment of our students. We have a high school that's coming online that we want to work with. We have a kind of a budget that we need to get our arms around because it's a little bit less than what we expected. So I think there's, again, experience is going to matter over these next couple of years.
Greg, one minute?
I'm running for a multitude of reasons. I want to say thank you to the the three existing members. And I'm running, I'm not running against any of them, I'm running for one of the open spots. I think I'd bring some new ideas, I think I could bring some some a fresh look. I think I'd bring a traditional set of values. I also was looking at, you know, thinking about why don't we have more celebrations of the the kids for like Halloween or Valentine's Day? And, you know, that seems to have gone away for some reason. I don't know if we're trying not to offend like a a small population over the kids. I think that's something that goes hand in hand at school. So for all those reasons and more, I hope that, and thank you for having me, that I hope you consider me for the school committee in town.
Meg, Holland, Fitzpatrick, Hornberger.
There were some gaspers in there because I was widowed before I married Brad. So someone actually joked if I was royalty at one point, because at one point I had like all my names on Facebook, and they're like, Billy, I'm like, all right, I'll tone it down. Thanks, Al, thank you certainly for having us all here this evening. It has been an honor truly to serve our community for six years. I do believe that there's more that I could do, and so I'm hopeful to serve one additional term as a hardworking, transparent, and accountable school committee member.
Matt?
I can be quick, I love this role. I didn't know that I was going to like it so much, I feel like I've contributed quite a bit, and I'm hopeful and energetic to continue to do that. We have a lot of things in the air right now, it's taken all seven of us to keep those balls up there. And and I want to continue to be part of those discussions, I feel like I've earned it, and I'm hopeful to get the the votes of the community to stay involved.
As always, I'll never ask you to vote for a specific person, but I'll beg you to vote. We have three open seats, and these people on the school committee aren't just special because they stand up and say, I'll put the time to make things happen for our kids. They're special because of everything they do for our kids. They're special because anybody who's had teenagers knows that by the time they hit high school, you're begging to get an hour a day with them because they're involved in all the activities and everything, they're friends. The choices you make now are going to influence six to eight hours a day of your child's life. And for people who say, I don't have children, don't make the mistake of believing that the quality of the school system doesn't impact the value of your house. So I won't ask you to vote for any of the four candidates, I tip my hat to all four of them. But I'll beg you to get out and vote, get to know the people that are running, and get out and vote. And as always, thank you, and may God bless, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight. Good night, all.